Here and first item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to rule out like our justice stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I switched from last month's agenda. We moved the public comment to the beginning of the agenda. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by speakers at this time. Is there anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? There's no one here for public comment. First item on the agenda then from a program review is our ECFE program.
As part of Maggie's presentation, she has a few letters here that she... Everybody have a copy of it, so.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
There you go. Are they the same?
No.
Okay, there we go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of each, please. Just go ahead and start that then, Jackson.
I was gonna say, I don't have it, actually.
Pardon?
Where's the presentation?
I do.
Bring it in. Oh, okay.
What'd you want?
Yep, there we go. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for having me here to present to you about the Delano ECFE program, early childhood family education, one of my favorite topics to talk about. So I'm Maggie Olson, the ECFE coordinator. Wanna, let's see.
You keep going, I wanna give you a remote.
Go ahead, you're right, go ahead.
You keep going.
Sorry. So a little bit of the history of ECFE I wanted to start off out with. So ECFE began about 51 years ago, and it was a research project in St. Cloud, Minnesota. The two philosophical tenants of this project... Okay, forward, there you go, thank you. The two philosophical tenants of the project was that number one, parents of our child's first and foremost teacher, and number two, if parents are involved in their child's education in the earliest years, then they're going to continue to be involved in their child's education through elementary, middle school, and high school. The other thing about ECFE, the third bullet, is that it's not offered in any other state in the United States. It's only in Minnesota. And this speaks to the commitment of Minnesota in realizing that families need to be supported in their parenting journey, just as much as children have a developmental journey, and parents also have a journey as well. There we go. Delano ECFE program is all about building relationships. That is top priority for us. So it's supporting parents again in their parenting journey, it's offering information, but the information that we offer is research-based. It's not just what Maggie Olson thinks. It needs to be backed by research. It's promoting parental attitudes, and it's also providing information on the various community resources that we have out there. ECFE is many times the first experience for families with a school district, and so our program really needs to always have their first, their best foot forward at all times, because we are the first face of usually school districts. We have a variety of family structures in Delano, so, and because of that, we have to offer a variety of different types of programming. So we have traditional, non-traditional families, single-parent families, we have stay-at-home families, working full-time, grandparents, we're raising grandchildren, and because of that, we need to offer something besides our traditional format. The traditional format is parents and children come together, they have a time that they spend playing together, and then there's a large group time, and after large group, then parents come with me for a discussion time, and the children go with the, with the early childhood teacher. That's the traditional format, but that traditional format doesn't work for all families in Delano. So some of the examples of different types of programming that we do at the Delano ECFE program is we have one-time family events, we have large community events, and then we have these non-traditional types of programs. One of them I'm going to point out is the nature class at Lake Rebecca. I started that class last year. I have a master's degree in environmental education, and so I wanted parents and children to together connect with nature. The first class I offered had eight families. The last class that I just did this spring has 22 families. I'm offering a class this summer, and we have 54 people in one class. It's huge. So having that different type of format seems like something the community is asking for. Another thing that I also started was eat, play, and learn. We have a lot of families who can't attend daytime programming, so I developed this program where the parents and children come together to eat a meal. So we have all these families socializing with one another, breaking bread together, then after that, they go upstairs and they do activities with their children. It's become very popular, and the parents are saying, are you gonna do it again next year? And I say, yeah, we are. The next, the other one that I put in place this year is Saturday Dads. Research shows dads play with kids differently than moms play with children, and so I wanted that one-on-one time for dads, as well as moms have a lot of one-on-one time classes that we have, but not a lot of dads. And so I offered this for Saturday morning, and it just, it turned out just wonderful. The dads again saying, are you gonna do this next year? And I go, yes, I am. So, so these are some of the things, different types of program that we do. We also have huge community events, like at the Santa's Workshop Party this year, we had 589 people show up in an hour and a half. That's big. And for our touch-a-truck event that we just had, we had 1,276 people show up in two hours. That was huge. So, so offering these types of programming. And here are some pictures of the different types. So as you can see up in the left, that's a picture of our, of one of our dads getting his hands all messy with his two daughters, and then obviously, the big helicopter is our touch-a-truck, which we had success with. And then the nature pictures are from the Lake Rebecca class, and the other two are from special events that we've done with families in the community. My goal as the new ECFE coordinator is, is to build community partnerships. Serving families in Delano means that we serve all families with children birthed through kindergarten, not just the families that come through the door of the community education building, okay? These partnerships that I've been working on are vital in reaching families that we would otherwise not be able to serve. Partnership with daycare programs, with, with family childcare providers, with Love Inc., with the library that brings in a lot of families with programming that they do. I want to really work on our ABE and GED program next year, and that I think is an opportunity that we need to really build at this point in time. And then just looking at working with other local community services that serve families with children birthed through, birthed through five. Again, it's building those partnerships so that we can build our program. The other piece that we have is your program here in Delano, ECFE, has a lot of longtime staff that have been doing ECFE for several years. And we have two licensed parent educators, three early childhood teachers, and this is unusual. We have three nurses in our program, which is very unusual. We have a state-certified education trainer, which is me, and five highly-qualified program assistants. The other piece is our advisory council. In September, I only had two people show up for the first meeting. By November, I had 15 members, and by January, I have 23. Of a really active advisory council that has given me a lot of ideas, thoughts about how to connect with the community, thoughts about our programming, how it can, how we can improve and be better, and so on. Just a great group of families from the Delano community. Last but not least, after every semester, I do program evaluations from all the families who attend. And so these are just some of the quotes and comments of many quotes and comments. I've highlighted three of them. One is, it's nice to hear other parenting experiences. It helps you feel less alone. It is also a nice break in the day for yourself and your children. Next one is, excellent program for learning ideas that work based upon research and feedback from other parents. And then the last one is, it is a helpful program to learn some good parenting techniques, to meet other local families, and have support and to socialize with adults. The last piece I'd like to present is, I'd like to end by reading a letter from a parent to show you the impact of the Delano ECFE program and what it has on families that we serve. So the letter is written by a family who went through a divorce last year, and we do one-on-one consultations with families. And he contacted me to help him help his daughter adjust to this new norm in her life now. So this is what he wrote when I asked him if he would like to write a letter to the school board. I'd like to read it to you if that's okay. Says, "To the Delano School Board, I am writing to express my gratitude and to advocate for the ECFE program within the Delano School District. My daughter and I moved to Delano in May 2023, and we were thrilled about this community's, this city's community spirit and the abundance of wonderful events this city hosts. We particularly were able to engage with the community through the ECFE program. Since then, my daughter and I have attended a zoo field trip, two nature programs, the wonderful ones and twos, and we've had a gold assessment completed. We also attended the play and learn with art, science, music, nature classes, the Cabin Fever gym sessions, touch truck event, and Grandparents' Day. These experiences have really enriched my daughter's life, and she gets excited when I tell her we have plans to go to school today. My daughter and I have greatly benefited from the ECFE program, and it has been an absolute thrill to watch her grow and thrive within the program. Through the ECFE program, my daughter has made several friendships, which have become meaningful and lasting for her. We have had play dates and birthday party attendance with these community friends. We've also bumped into numerous other classmates and families at our community events and the city park, which has given her a strong sense of community. For us, the ECFE program has been our way to connect to our new home. We are currently enrolled in ECFE classes and events for the spring of this year, and we plan to continue our enrollment until our daughter begins her K-12 academic career with Delano. I am confident that the ECFE program will be a key resource to prepare her for that journey. She has already demonstrated immense value and appreciation from the program, and I have no doubt that the ECFE classes, activities, and events are laying a solid foundation for her academic growth and success. Thank you and best regards, Colin Brown." And that concludes my presentation on ECFE. Does anybody have any questions? Or comments?
Very impressive. I appreciate the numbers of what you've started and what you've done and the efforts you've put in to kind of customize and do non-traditional things to best support the families. So.
Yes.
Great work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's ECFE, I've been doing ECFE for 35 years, and it is a love of mine. I can't think of anything I'd rather be doing than, it's, it's, it brings me a lot of joy to know when parents come up to me on a daily basis and tell me how much the program has helped them through their journey. And, and parenting is a journey, and, and it's a tough journey, but I think we can help families make it a little bit easier. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Great.
Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come here and present. I appreciate it. Oh, there's an extra letter there from another parent. If you'd like to read it in your spare time, it was another parent, and I think it's an interesting perspective that you... Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. This item has minutes financial reports from the last month. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved. Brian.
Brian is first.
Second.
Second by Corey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the resolution for acceptance of gifts. Whereas the Loretto Lions Club, $4,000 for the Delano Intermediate School Eagle Bluff Field Trip, and $1,500 for the Delano High School Senior Breakfast, High School Pie, $60 for EL testing, and KLN Enterprises, $500 for the Archery Club. All of these organizations have generously donated their funds for the items mentioned above. This is a... Roll call. Sorry, I gotta find my place. Vote. So do I have a motion to approve the resolution of gifts?
Deppa.
Deppa with the first. Second?
Second, Jim.
Second with Jim. Any discussion? All right, we've got a roll call vote.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Moriola.
Aye.
Board member Black.
Aye.
Board member Roser.
Aye.
Board member Kirky.
Aye.
Board member Schoust.
Aye.
And board member Deppa. Thank you.
She carries. Next item on the agenda is our personnel report. There's quite a few typical hires on this related to staffing up for TKC for the summer. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Deppa.
Deppa for first. Second?
Moriola.
No, go ahead. I can't just project it for some reason.
Oh.
Second by Jess. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we've got administrator reports. First up, Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am going to be very, very brief. I was anticipating a little bit more information from the update of the legislative session. That session is going to conclude here in about four hours. The regular session has to adjourn by 11:59 today on the 19th of May. We already know we're going to need a special session. I think they're starting to see some parameters. There was at the beginning of the weekend, I believe around Friday, Thursday, Friday at the end of last week, that there was an agreement between the budget, the split house, and the Senate. And once they announced it, and they were actually doing the, the press conference, there was a number of the FL senators and representatives that aggressively and vehemently made a protest-type of a move that required the leadership to go back into the drawing board and to relook at some things. I believe it surrounded the providing health, healthcare to non-documented citizens in the state, which has been going on for a while. So with that said, we're not too excited about anything coming in as past historic 2023 session, but we're just, as Mary said, we're focusing in on the, the financials. We don't see a ton change in policy, but there are some things that we're just keeping an eye on. One of the nice things is that we are going to, and I believe it's June...
Second.
Second, if they have a, I think they're actually talking about having a special session either later on this week or right after Memorial Day. So hopefully, we'll get something, because we're due, Mary and I are due to go, we go annually, usually in a budget session, we go annually to a presentation from the Department of Education, from the Government Affairs, from the department that talks about, all right, what does this really mean for us now? Because it'll be very quick here. I believe that we'll get things done and taken care of, hopefully. I thought we were actually had an outside chance getting a budget taken care of and approved before the regular session ended, but things happen. These are surprises that come up at state legislature, and that's how government works at times. So with that, I don't, any questions with regards to the update on where things are at? Very excited to meet in a couple of weeks with our strategic planning team to talk all about implementation. And each of the buildings are going to break down their own three-year operational plan that is, it's driven just from their area, whether it's community ed, elementary, intermediate, and high school. And then we've got several departments that are going to be couched right within the district, finances, to technology, to all sorts of facilities, things like that, that will start to really build that implementation plan to start that off. The last thing I'm going to do, this is official, Sophia, this is your last school board meeting, and we're going to graduate you in a couple of weeks, but there's a ceremonial thing that we do. This is your plaque put up at your graduation open hour, and we just want to thank you so very much for two years, two years of great service of the student school board representative. Congratulations.
You have to sing a song.
I just want to thank you all. Obviously, we'll have a report later, but for giving me the opportunity to be here two years ago, I'm very grateful, and I've learned a lot from you all, but I know Logan and Brady will be wonderful next year. So, thank you.
Hold that up again.
Thank you. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thanks, Matt. Next up, our principals, Ms. Schultz.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Pleasure to be here on behalf of the elementary school. And I'll start off with a site base update. Towards the end of the year, we obviously are kind of looking ahead into the fall and kind of those housekeeping items, so getting our fall orientation date set and those types of things lined up, and we have some new Chromebooks that are coming, so some of the logistical things to wrap up the end of the year and plan into the fall. We also talked a little bit about our end-of-year activities and just some communication surrounding those for the entire school and student body. So some of our grade levels do an A to Z countdown, some of them do a 10-day countdown, and there's very fun things that all the kids enjoy, but then sometimes we don't maybe let our kitchen staff know, or they were not on that one, or some of our specialist classes, they're like, are the kids coming today? Is what letter of the alphabet is it? Where might they be? So just kind of shoring up some of that communication to make sure everybody knows where everybody's going. And sometimes, depending on what the activity is, it can cause some extra energy, or maybe some disappointment, or a little bit of action among our kiddos. So just having everybody know all of those pieces is something we want to make sure is shared. And then, obviously, we've been talking about our parent pickup at the end of the day, and we got feedback from our staff. But one thing that I did want to mention, that's something that I've noticed that I have truly, truly enjoyed, is when you walk out and parents are outside, they are visiting with each other, they have the biggest smiles on their faces when their kids run out to give them a hug. We had a student that was out for a week with some health things, and then his mom was in line, and I was able to talk with her face-to-face and check in on how he was doing. So not only has it reduced the congestion on Tiger Drive, but I feel like it's really given a good opportunity for some face-to-face interactions with our community members. That has been really, really positive. And then, the last thing, our site base reps, our task to do is to come together with their teams and share some of their highlights of their year, and then that gets shared at our end-of-year closing staff meeting, so I'm looking forward to hearing what those are. I have a brief, fast update for you from our second and third graders. We're still finishing up our kindergarten first grade assessments. Those take a little bit longer, because those are the one-on-one assessments. I will have those for you in June. But there's the three areas that we really look at. The CDMR is the curriculum-based measure for reading, so that's their fluency, which is the biggest indicator of that reading progress, and the dyslexia screener for our kids. So our second graders started at 63% and ended at 74%, which I think is a really nice jump for those kids, and the efforts that their teachers have put in as well. Because I don't know if you remember on the, some of that behavior data that I shared, that second grade crew has got some active kiddos in there, and they are learning and thriving and made some really big gains. Our third graders, 68 to 75% in that fluency rate. For A reading, which is that reading fluency combined with the comprehension and vocabulary, second grade went from 71 to 74, and third grade stayed 75, 75. And for A math, which is our general math measure, second grade started at 73, and then ended at 81%, and third grade 79, and then dipped just 1% to 78. So overall, I feel like our students have really made some nice growth this year, as indicated by our fast screener. Summer school and ESY, those are up and running. We have five sections. We have one kindergarten section, two first-grade sections, and then a second and a third-grade second section. So those will start July 7th, I believe, and run through July 31st. And then coming up, we have PE game day, which used to be field day, which used to be track and field day. So now it's really more a testament to what it is, where we kind of celebrate the PE games that the kids have learned all year, and then we save that track and field day for the intermediate school. So just some station-based activities. We have a lot of volunteers, and then parents are welcome to come up and watch. It used to be kind of down in that flag football area, but now we're going to use the turf, so then parents that come and watch can sit up in the bleachers and watch their kids have a little fun. We have second and third grade concerts this Wednesday and Thursday, and then we've got a few more field trips. And then, once again, our third graders are going to head over to the intermediate schools for some of that little transition work and seeing what it will look like as fourth graders. And then we have our all-school picnic on May 27th to wrap up the end of the year. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. All right, Ms. Thompson, the intermediate school.
for some face-to-face interactions with our community members. That has been really, really positive. And then the last thing, our site-based reps, our task to do is to come together with their teams and share some of their highlights of their year. And then that gets shared at our end-of-year closing staff meetings. So I'm looking forward to hearing what those are. I have a brief, fast update for you from our second and third graders. We're still finishing up our kindergarten first grade assessments. Those take a little bit longer because those are the one-on-one assessments. I will have those for you in June. But there's the three areas that we really look at. The CDMR is the curriculum-based measure for reading. So that's their fluency, which is the biggest indicator of that reading progress and the dyslexia screener for our kids. So our second graders started at 63% and ended at 74%, which I think is a really nice jump for those kids. And the efforts that their teachers have put in as well, because I don't know if you remember on the, some of that behavior data that I shared, that second grade crew has got some active kiddos in there and they are learning and thriving and made some really big gains. Our third graders, 68 to 75% in that fluency rate. For A-reading, which is that reading fluency combined with the comprehension and vocabulary, second grade went from 71 to 74 and third grade stayed 75, 75. And for AMATH, which is our general math measure, second grade started at 73 and then ended at 81%. And third grade, 79, and then dipped just 1% to 78. So overall, I feel like our students have really made some nice growth this year, as indicated by our fast screener. Summer school and ESY, those are up and running. We have five sections. We have one kindergarten section, two first grade sections, and then a second and a third grade section. So those will start July 7th, I believe, and run through July 31st. And then coming up, we have PE game day, which used to be field day, which used to be track and field day. So now it's really more a testament to what it is, where we kind of celebrate the PE games that the kids have learned all year. And then we save that track and field day for the intermediate schools. So just some station-based activities. We have a lot of volunteers and then parents are welcome to come up and watch. It used to be kind of down in that flag football area, but now we're going to use the turf. So then parents that come and watch can sit up in the bleachers and watch their kids have a little fun. We have second and third grade concerts this Wednesday and Thursday. And then we've got a few more field trips. And then, once again, our third graders are going to head over to the intermediate schools for some of that little transition work and seeing what it will look like as fourth graders. And then we have our all-school picnic on May 27th to wrap up the end of the year. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. All right, Ms. Thompson, the intermediate school.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for allowing me to present to you this evening on behalf of the intermediate school. I can start with an update from our site-based team as well. The last meeting, we spent some time just doing some real quick impressions of our MCA data. We have just preliminary scores to look at. And so we kind of talked just about the process, how everything went, and then looked at those initial scores. Some things we discussed, we had maybe a 3% or 4% decrease from last year, which is really maybe three or four students. So nothing that we were terribly concerned about. Talked about the timing of the testing. You know, we had Easter break in there and we had the late start in there. So just some of those pieces to look at, maybe for next year. We had about the same number of students opt out as we usually do. We always kind of take a look at that. We had 15 students altogether opt out. We're usually between 13 and 15 in terms of opt-outs. Overall, though, our score is pretty consistent. We're usually in the mid to low 70s. And so that's right about where we landed for this year too. So really proud of our kids and our teachers for working hard on that. And then, like Rachel said, to our site-based team, a lot in May is just working on keeping everyone in the loop with regard to communications. Our building is just really busy with events, so just making sure that everyone is in the loop and knowing what's going on and who's going where. So for professional development this month, we do have a late start coming up this week. The format looks very similar to what it's looked at, looked like all year long. Our teachers have some letters training that's happening. Our teachers who aren't doing letters training will be looking at fast data. We've also finished our last round of fast data. So we usually use our May late start to look at fast data and do some initial placement for next year in interventions. A lot of times, though, those will get tweaked when we do our initial screening in the fall as well. But we do review our fast data to look at the effectiveness of our interventions and then also do some initial placements. Also, at our late start this week, we'll be doing a para-PD session. So we've been doing some informational sessions for our certified staff on special education law and how it relates to behavior. Just trying to build some common understanding among our staff related to some other things we've been seeing this year. So we're offering that same session for our para-professionals during the late start, just like I said, just to kind of build some common understanding around some things that we're seeing, so we can just be on the same page with what we can work on together to support our students. So we'll do that during our late start as well. In terms of MTSS, kind of where we're at with our interventions and our core instruction, I can share, just have our fast results for building-wide, and I can share some more details maybe in June. But our fast results in math, for our spring results, our students were 86% proficient. So that's 86% college pathway or low risk. That's an increase of 4% from trimester one. So we met our building goal in that area in math, which is exciting. That's a great increase for us. And then our reading goal was also 86% proficient, so college pathway or low risk in that area. That was an increase of 1% from trimester one. So we met both of our goals in that area, which is exciting to see. So again, we'll just be reviewing that data in more depth at our late start, just to look at the effectiveness of our interventions, where we need to place kids for next year. So. Other than that, we just have a whole long list of things happening in May. So we have also had our track and field day rescheduled for this week, so we'll have that happening Thursday and Friday. We have our annual Tigers Got Talent Talent Show coming up. Our pie hosts that for us now annually. That's always really fun. So that's coming up next Wednesday. Our fifth grade is going, well, they're going to the Saints game tomorrow. And we were really excited because this is the first time our fifth grade has also been invited to sing the National Anthem, which was going to be a wonderful cherry on top of Sandy Meyerson's career, but it's going to be real rotten weather. They're going, they're going to dress for the weather and hopefully it won't be too soggy, but we're excited for them. And congratulations to Sandy and hopefully they'll at least get to sing before they get soaked. So. Fifth grade is homesteading, sixth grade's on their way to Valley Fair, just lots of those fun annual traditions for our students. And then just in terms of us wrapping up the year, I always do end-of-the-year checkout with staff, so we're working on that right now. Teachers come and do a one-on-one with me. We talk about what went well this year, what was challenging for them this year, and then anything that they would like to improve or change, or what we can help support them for next year. So I like to start that with staff at the beginning of May, so that we have some time to get through all of them before they wrap up and head out for June. So it's a busy time, but we're getting there. Any questions for the intermediate school?
Ms. Thompson, all right, Mr. Voight with the high school.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the high school this evening. Of course, I always start with recognitions and celebrations. So I just wanted to point out that on May 7th, I believe, we had senior awards night, thanks to those of you that attended. Of course, that evening, we recognized numerous high honors and distinction graduates, students of the year, national merit scholars. But most impressively, we were engaged with the Delano Area Scholarship Association to hand out over $100,000 worth of scholarships to our seniors. So a sincere appreciation to the Delano Area Scholarship Association and our other local business partners for their continued support. That's always a fun evening and we have the honor of assisting them and passing that out to our seniors and kind of wishing them well as they venture forth for their rest of their lives. Congratulations to our girls' track team who placed fourth at the True Team State Tournament this past weekend. And I want to recognize all of our staff. As you know, there was a big article in Delano Herald-Journal about Delano High School. And this is not a testament just to the high school, of course. It speaks highly of the entire Delano Public School System. But we have the highest graduation rate in the entire state. So we are obviously very, very proud of that. I don't want to name specific individuals because I think it truly is a team effort. And if I started to name people, I would, you know, incidentally or accidentally miss somebody. But I just want to express my sincere appreciation for all the efforts of our staff, teachers, support staff, para-professionals, and then also the parents, obviously, who are cheering their kids on along the way, you know, reinforcing what our expectations are and kind of helping to push our kids across that finish line for those that need a little extra support. So kudos to all of Delano Public Schools for that recognition. I know that Katie and Rachel both referenced fast data. I don't have summary fast data for you. I'll make sure to do that in June. I don't have that yet because we do not have substantial completion. Our ninth and 10th graders, just because of how their schedule works, we tried to tie the fast data into their finals at the end of the year here. So I'll be certainly willing and able to report that out in June. I do want to point out, however, though, the efforts of Ms. Autumn Huyu and Breeze Johnson, who you might have seen on the Facebook post that Bali put out, you know, were unique and creative in their motivation for students. They had, you know, by the end of the day, just covered themselves, well, students covered them in temporary tattoos that they were offered depending on their growth. And so that was quite impressive. So I'm expecting great results, but I'll again, share those, share those in June. Our theme for this year was refining our practice. And so I wanted to just kind of give a summary overview of what we've been working on over the course of this year to refine our practice, the results of which are really going to be, I think, felt in years to come. One of those things is the direct admissions process. So this is a program through the Minnesota Department of Education and the Office of Higher Education. Basically, Ryan Tool has spearheaded this effort and that we can synchronize our Skyward systems with the Minskew system. And essentially, if students achieve certain benchmarks, GPA and those sorts of things, then they are granted automatic acceptance into most two- and four-year schools in the state of Minnesota. So we're getting some of the behind-the-scenes pieces in place through Skyward so that that can take place. We're hoping and expecting that, you know, that might make post-secondary learning an option for students that hadn't previously thought of it before. Obviously, this is an opportunity for us to remove barriers. We've talked at length over the months about our work with Edge of Climber. A huge thank you to Katie Thompson, Rachel Schultz, Monica Kunkel, Joe Hitchens, Debbie Finley, Diane Pullman. Forgive me if I'm forgetting somebody, but those people have put a lot of time and energy into getting that system up and running for the last several months. And so again, we're looking forward to its implementation in the coming years. Zello, we've talked a lot about Zello over the course of this year. It's our foundational curriculum, if you will, for our Career Life Prep course. And next year, we're going to have Course Planner in place. And so we've talked over the course of the years about how we want to make registration an extremely intentional process, right? We don't want students to just pick classes randomly or because their friends have picked them. We want kids to think about what it is they want to do with the rest of their lives and then find the courses that we offer to prepare them for whatever that journey might be. So Course Planner is going to allow our students in that ninth grade class and throughout high school, of course, to really dig into what courses we offer and put together their four- and six-year plans for how they want to make the best use of their high school career. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that we, as a high school site-based leadership team, are allocated monies from the professional development budget. And we, over the course of the year, have approved over 350 hours of curriculum writing. There's probably no better example of refining our practice than those teachers who are willing to spend time outside of school over the summer hours to refine their curriculum. That might be because standards have changed slightly with the state. That might be because things have shifted grade levels. There's a variety of reasons, but the fact that our teachers are stepping forward to say, hey, I want to put in the extra time to refine my curriculum so that we can better serve our students. So over 350 hours of curriculum writing time, that's in addition, of course, to a lot of the workshops and stuff that we send our teachers to with those resources. And then last but not least, I'm happy to report, as of now, kind of knock on wood, cross my fingers, whatever, that as of right now, we have all of our teaching and head coaching positions filled for next school year. I hesitantly say that, only I'm happy about that, but nervous at the same time. So we're in a very good spot, super excited about the people that we're bringing in. They're going to be great additions to the high school and all of Delano Public School staff. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the high school.
All right, thank you. Up, Mary Reader, our business manager.
We did a little report for the month. Exciting. Hey.
Look at you go. That doesn't look like yourself. Feel the pain. I get into these stuffs, it's completely different. There's no spreadsheets anymore.
I just wanted to give the little update on our enrollment. So we're, our enrollment as of this end of April was at 2,404. Our average is 2,412. We go up and down throughout the year. But overall, from what I had budgeted for last June and what we ended up with this year, we're 34 kids higher than what was originally budgeted for, which is good for our budget. And then here's some nice little spreadsheet. So this is that, but it's not pretty here. It's really hard to read. But anyway, this is that spreadsheet that I shared with you last, we, last month during the work session that kind of showed where we were year-to-date, how we've spent. So right now, we're, you know, through about 80% of the year. And I wanted to show that we're, this year, if you look at the three different, the elementary, vocational and special ed, we're at 63% of our budget is spent on education. And then this, then it kind of went through all the other programs there as well. But then I put this in from our last year's audit and it shows that overall, 65, 66% is what we spend on education in our classroom education in our school district. So I think we're still on track for that. I think that's a good way to kind of show that we are being very fiscally responsible with our funds. And then the last one is just showing, last month I was showing that we were deficit spending. While $330,000, we're down to about $180,000 now. And that's basically the biggest chunk is because of special ed aid. I did up it to what they say we're supposed to be getting, where I had been, they had been prorating us down to 95%. So that really is what brought our fund balance deficit spending down, was just recognizing that extra special ed aid. But again, we'll be finalizing the budget in June. And for next school year, as well as the current year, will be our final revision. But I'll explain any extra changes that we make at the end of the month. I'll be decreasing the amount of donated funds that show us up as expense, reflecting more of what was actually spent. We always have a large amount that's unspent that we carry forward into next year. So some of those extra little areas will be adjusted in June. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Nice, nice PowerPoint.
Like the incorporation of the table. That is much what I would.
People couldn't be funny. Look at these two.
Yucking it up over here.
A good spreadsheet and a presentation.
All right, next up, community ed, Chris Runkie.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight on behalf of community education. Tonight, I'd like to provide a few highlights from our program. So first, I would like to say thank you to Maggie Olson for her time and dedication for, one, putting the presentation together, but also for her dedication to the ECFE program and all the efforts that she puts into making that program what it is and the success that it is. So that is truly appreciated. In regards to our tack and facilities, so from December through March, there were 22,936 check-ins during the winter of '24, compared to 24,839 during the winter of '25. That was an increase of 1,903 people coming into our facilities from last year to this year. So it's an impressive number. A lot of hard work by our tack staff, making that effort work. And then, so following that record-breaking winter season for attendance and participation, I'll return him to more of a typical participation levels for this time of the year. So the weather turning nicer, obviously not today, but when the sun comes out, people tend to stay outside and not as many visits into the tack. But, so we're seeing that typical trend again for this year. Our outdoor field usage has grown thanks to several new youth across teams and then also the addition of the legacy soccer groups. And then something to look forward to coming down, coming around in the holiday season is a Lori Line concert has been booked in the PAC for this upcoming holiday season. So more information will be coming out regarding that from their team, but that is exciting news for the PAC. With enrichment and TKC, our enrichment offerings are expanding with new courses like children's yoga for our ages three to six, seven to 10 years old. So another, a new offering there for them. And then also transportation support for our pre-K students is now being offered for our summer enrichment classes. So this is increasing access for those families that haven't typically had the ability when they're in the, in the TKC at the, at community ed. We hadn't had that transportation, but now bringing all the programming back to the TK, or the community ed building, we're able to add that transportation option and increase that down to our preschool level too. So adding some options there for those families as well. Then preschool, the end of the year has arrived for our preschool classrooms. Our teachers and students are holding their classroom celebrations starting today. The last celebration will then conclude on May 29th. But then looking forward to next year for preschool registration, it's currently open. Some of the sections are filling up, but there are still room in all of our sections. So if you're looking for a great preschool experience, register as soon as you can. And recreation and sports are wrapping up our seventh and eighth grade spring seasons. Our seventh and eighth grade softball and baseball programs wrapped up last week. And then golf was able to squeeze their last matching earlier today before they got rained on. So it was, it was exciting for them, but then also the weather had been able to cooperate with us for the most part throughout the season, as can always be difficult in Minnesota. That concludes my report. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next up, Sophia's last student board representative report and Logan's continuing reports.
So far, our report this meeting, Sophia and I decided that we would show you all a little video to wrap up the 2024-2025 school year. In general, we think that this video kind of reflects the attitude of the school year. It has been a wonderful year for staff, students and anyone in the building. We hope you enjoy a glimpse into our school year from more of a student perspective. We hope you enjoy a glimpse into our school year from more of a student perspective.
Buffering. That's a.
I just blame someone IT.
Try it again.
That's okay.
Again, later. Before, I saw the whole thing.
Well, that's okay. There's just a few more pictures left. But this video just kind of wraps up the year. Along with this last meeting, Logan and I were planning on sharing with you, we had our final student listening session with a group of about 15 seniors. And quite literally, it was pretty much all positive things, which is very cool to see. It was just about their entire high school experience, but also just their senior year experience. And it was really cool to see just so many positive things said. And I think the video also attests to this, just how great of a year it was. I think this senior class is a really, well, maybe I'm a little biased because I'm a part of it, but sure, it's special class, and I think they really had a great experience, which kind of just shows the work and environment that Delano has. So thank you.
Thank you. Six days left.
Awesome job this year.
Yes, thank you. Thank you both. All right, next up, we've got our board reports. So Masico, Sarah.
Not, not anything too out of the ordinary from April. Again, just updates on staffing, adjusting staffing to meet the needs of students related to special education programming. The biggest, I think, relevant update is that there has been a change to the business director, business department staffing at Masico. So we will be facilitating a short-term contract with someone from CISO. And the person who will be managing the financial services at Masico has done that in the past, so is very familiar with the processes of Masico, which is a very complicated, complex system. So that's probably the biggest news. Otherwise, Matt will be speaking at the STEP graduation this Friday, and Masico will be celebrating 50 years of existence in June, I believe it is.
I think I was asked, what was it like in the early years, Matt, from my colleagues in Masico? It's not very endearing.
50 years of service, right?
Oh, I thought you were going to tell us what it was like. I get it now, okay.
That kind of bad-fired out.
Any questions?
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks.
Next, we've got Wright Tech Center. I think Jim is normally the member, but I think Ryan attended this one.
Yeah, I got to play Jim Gerke's stunt double, so that was kind of fun. It was actually a fairly quick meeting, but there were four items or five items that I thought worthy of calling out. They were very much celebrating the fact that they are making their last lease payment in June, so that was a pretty big deal for them. Certainly, a pretty big financial turnaround there. Registration numbers for next year are generally flat. They're up about 10 or 12 students. And then they also have the academy portion, which was perfectly flat. So no concern there really, but registration was about the same. They did hire a new construction teacher, which they were very excited about, I think, with all of their teaching positions. There's a little anxiety about how quickly they can fill them and what type of candidate they can get. It was somebody who previously had worked with them in a different capacity, so they were very fond of this person and thought it was a really good hire. So they were excited about that. They also have begun discussions on a pre-sale of their home build, which is very atypical for them. It was kind of a nice position. They were pretty jazzed that they would maybe get that house sold before they even start building it, as opposed to having to kind of carry the cost. It's not, nothing's done, but they were just very optimistic. So cool to hear that. And then they do have one open math teacher position. They told me to put in a plug if anybody knows friends in neighboring districts that maybe, you know, got cut or something of the sort. They're like, send them our way. I'm like, all right, I'll figure out a way to do that. But they need one math teacher, and otherwise they were good on staffing. So I think that's it.
Thanks, Ryan. Next up, in old business, there are two policies that we're set to approve for the second read. Is there anyone here for public comment on either one of the policies, which are harassment and violence or the school board committees? All right. With that, we'll move to approve the second read of policy 413, harassment and violence due to substantive changes. Do you have a motion to approve this policy? Deppa first.
Shoust.
Shoust for second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. The next policy is approving the second read of policy 213, school board committees due to substantive changes. You'll notice in the linked document that Matt and Mr. Monkey went back and did a few edits to the policy we had during the work session so that there's some consistency of format and just a relook on that, which is attached here to your agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the second read of policy 213?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Corey.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries to approve policy 213 for school board committees. Next up, in new business, we have the approval of the food service prime vendor. This item was discussed in workshop last month.
Correct. Yep, so we put it out to bid. We posted it in the Delano Herald-Journal for a couple weeks. We had a deadline of April 21st, sent it out to multiple vendors, but we only had, we only received one proposal, and it was from our current vendor. So we are just recommending that we accept that one proposal that we received. And it is, it does have an ability to just keep renewing for up to three years after the initial year, so, which is what we've done in the past. They've been our vendor for the last nine years.
Thanks, Mary. Do I have a motion to approve the prime vendor selection?
I'll move, Ryan.
Ryan. Second by Corey. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries to approve that vendor. The next item is to approve amending the 25-26 school calendar to change graduation from June 7 to May 31st. We talked about this last month. Also, given the length of time between the dates, the recommendation from administration, the administration can move it. Anything else you'd add?
No, I think that the standard language of how we're phrasing this, Mr. Boyd, correct me if I'm wrong, but it'll be the first Sunday after Memorial Day. Instead of the first Sunday in June, it'll be, that will help protect us moving forward to, instead of the 7th of June, it'll be the 31st, for example, next year, so.
Do I have a motion to approve? Deppa first, second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the first read of policy 501, school weapons. We talked about this in work session. They're broadening the definition of weapons and a couple other minor edits related to the policy. Do I have a motion to approve this first read of policy 501? Deppa with the first, second? Second with Jim. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries to approve that. Next up, adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Corey.
I'll second.
Second by Shoust. All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Sue.